Let's go ahead and call the November 21st, 2022, meeting of the Anderson County Board of Commissioners to order. We'll start with a prayer by Commissioner Vandergriff and the pledge by Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Heavenly Father, for another opportunity to freely become, come before your throne of grace. We thank you, Lord, for the abundant goodness and the mercy that you've granted us every day. Thank you for preparing, or thank you for Thanksgiving Day that are coming up and help us to remember to be thankful every day. Thankful for your sacrifice of your precious Son, Jesus, as an atonement for our sins. Thankful for your unfailing love for us and thankful for your forgiveness when we fall short. Thank you for the blessings of family, friends, and community. Lord, please help us. Please guide our hearts and our minds to know and do the things that are righteous and holy in your eyes. Help us to be good stewards of the blessings that you've poured out on us. We give you all the glory and all the honor, for you alone are worthy, in Jesus Christ's most holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the, before the presentation by General Clark, we'll have the appearance of citizens. If anyone's here that would like to speak on an issue that is not on the agenda already, you can do so at this time. Just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Colt Jennings. Live on Settlers Drive. I'm the Anderson County Sheriff's Deputy. I do not represent the Sheriff's Office or any other organization. I am here as a citizen. In early September, I emailed all sixteen commissioners explaining the need for a pay increase for all Sheriff's Office employees, and I received six responses. I would like to recognize the following commissioners for responding to that email: Commissioner Wondell, Commissioner Mays, Commissioner Palmer, Commissioner Vandergriff, Commissioner Varan, and Commissioner Denenberg. Thank you for taking the time to show you care and are ready to work towards a solution. For those that didn't read the email, here's a quick summary of what it said. I discussed how our deputies' pay is so low that we qualify for public housing by almost $7,000. I also covered how a deputy would have to spend at least sixty percent of their income for a one-bedroom apartment based on current prices and availability. And finally, I touched on experience by stating that deputies with twenty-plus years' experience are only paid $100 more per month than a year-one deputy. Recently, members of the local police benevolence association chapter conducted a salary survey for the Knoxville Metropolitan Statistical Area, and of the responses they received, Anderson County was near the bottom. Based on that survey, here are the numbers. We would need a seventeen percent pay increase to no longer qualify for public housing. We would need a twenty-five percent pay increase to be on par with Sevier County, who came in at the highest. That's how far behind we are. In my email, I also touched on experience and retention, and I want to leave you with this comparison. My sergeant, with nineteen years of experience, is making the same as a year-one deputy at Sevier County. I am here tonight to express in person the dire need for a pay increase and a step plan for experienced deputies. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, real wages have fallen for nineteen consecutive months. Every month there is no action is another month we fall further behind. I believe this requires immediate action, and I'm asking for your support. Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Move on to, we've got a presentation by General Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. When the Budget Committee met last, that evening, the sheriff and I were approached by representatives of the University of Tennessee Law Enforcement Innovation Center, which is headquartered in Oak Ridge. They explained that the governor and the legislature have created a new fund that they are urgently trying to push money out, $100 million, for violent crime grants across the state of Tennessee. Those grants can be up to $2 million each. There is no limit to the number that you could apply for, although there may be a practical loss and appeal as you apply for more. In meeting with the LEIC, we saw needs that these grants could address with regard to violent crime in Anderson County. These are 100% grants. They require no matching funds. The period of time over which the grants could be paid are two and a half years. They are competitive in nature, and they require an application. Whether we would qualify for one or none, or how much we may receive, is all depending on the competitive grant application process. But we would like to submit three grant applications on behalf of Anderson County and other law enforcement partners located within the county. The main thrust of these grants is collaborative, and collaboration is required in order to apply for them and must be demonstrated as part of the grant process. The reason that I ran over to the Budget Committee that night and sought to get on the agenda, and thus this agenda, was because we have an application deadline. The governor and the legislature are wanting to push these grants out quickly to try and make a difference on the ground. There is a December 15th deadline for us to submit letters of intent indicating that we are interested in applying. If we are to apply, those grants would go in in January. If any grant application is successful, there would be a grant contract that would come back to you for approval. Because this is moving quickly, a lot of the details are not ironed out, and when I ran over here last week, very few of them were. Since that time, we have continued to work to try and develop these grant ideas. What do we need? What would work? Who could participate, et cetera? The three grant thrusts are intended to be one, to attack domestic violence. We do not have a domestic violence safehouse or shelter in Anderson County. It is a weak link in our chain of providing services and protection to the victims of domestic violence. These cases tend to repeat and escalate. They generate a lot of calls for our Sheriff's Department and our municipal police departments, and it costs the county a tremendous amount of money, and of course, victims are suffering. We would like to have a place to place victims so they can escape that cycle of abuse. The second grant is intended to address narcotics. I'm sorry, with regard to the first grant, I should have said the FJC would be a strategic partner of the Family Justice Center with regard to the domestic violence safehouse. The second grant addressing narcotics would be in collaboration between the Sheriff's Department, the Crime Task Force, and another police agency here in Anderson County. The principal thrust of the narcotics grant would be for equipment. Narcotics investigations, violent crime investigations can be equipment-intensive, and we need more equipment. These would involve surveillance devices, cameras, ways to document crime scenes, ways to respond to crime scenes, be they violent or narcotic in nature. We have a unique task force in Anderson County. We are the only one in the state of Tennessee that is both a narcotics and a violent crime task force. So we have a fourteen-year demonstrated history of a collaborative task force in Anderson County that is unique in the state in addressing violent crime issues, and we think that may stand us in good stead in the grant competition. The third grant would be for a crime analysis and intelligence-led policing center. This would involve gathering data, gathering information that would help direct law enforcement efforts so that we can be smart in terms of where patrol units are tasked, when people are asked to work, so that there is a combination between the need for police services and the delivery of police services. It would also be designed to collect evidence that is digital, electronic, social media, and so forth, that is increasing exponentially in our community and all across the state. The reason we're coming to County Commission is that these 100% grants are reimbursement-based. So we would have to spend the money and then get reimbursed. Spend the money and then get reimbursed. And in order to spend the money and take advantage of the grants, should we get one or more of the grants, we would need money to draw upon to do that. And so we are asking for the Commission to allocate, in the event that we are awarded a grant, and in the event Commission approves the contract and scope of services, up to $150,000 per month. We would then spend the money, apply for reimbursement. When the reimbursement came, we would then have the money available to spend again, and so forth, until we received all of the grant funds. So there would be no permanent expenditure of public funds, but there would be a temporary expenditure like a bank line of credit. The second thing we are asking for is authority for the county mayor or sheriff to sign a memorandum of understanding or a letter of intent supporting our grant application. And we need that expression timely so that we can submit our, our letter of intent to apply for the grant. So it's a multi-step process. Letter of intent in December, grant application in January, and then sometime thereafter, the competitive results will be released. If we are successful, we would then come back to Commission for approval of the grant contract.
Is there a date that these funds must be spent?
It's up to two and a half-year period of time. So for each application, there would be two components. One would be things, right? Equipment that would be front-end loaded. So there would be more purchases at the beginning of a grant, less at the end. Some of the expenses would be reoccurring. Examples would be software licenses for criminal intelligence software that would be renewed each year. So some of those expenses would go over the course of the two-and-a-half-year grant period. More of them would be front-end loaded near the very beginning of the grants when equipment was being acquired.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Allen.
How about the reimbursement? Do you know how timely that would be?
We asked that question, and we were pleased with the answer. The answer is we can choose quarterly or monthly, and of course, we would choose monthly, which would allow us to cycle that money faster, which would be particularly important as to Commissioner Jaeger's question during the beginning of the grant, when we're needing to, to cycle that money quickly to acquire the equipment.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. General, on the opioid settlement money, have we received any of that yet?
Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that question, and near the end of the opioid lawsuit, while I got that started, we were excluded from the very ending of it because they determined that the, that the, while the Drug Dealer Liability Act applied, as we thought it did, that the district attorneys did not have the authority, absent a specific agreement with their county, to pursue that. And while Anderson County endorsed the lawsuit, and I came to you asking for that authority, that was not true across the state. And so they, they ruled with respect to all fourteen judicial districts and said, this is something that would need to be pursued individually. And so the law firm that was retained as part of that process continued, and they would be, they would not be knowledgeable about those payments and the timing and that sort of thing, but I'm no longer involved in that process.
Okay, and the reason why I ask is, but I'm going to support this, is about how to fund it going forward, you know, if we could have used that money. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for General Clark? Commissioner White.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I am very much in favor of this, applying for these grants. What is the general want from us tonight?
Sounded like he wants at least one motion to get the mayor moving forward.
I would like to make that motion that we authorize the sheriff or the mayor to sign this letter to where that we can get the process started. I'd like to make that a motion.
Was that going to be your motion, Commissioner Smar?
Well, I'll defer to Commissioner.
Okay.
But I was going to make the same motion, yes.
Well, I'm sure you'd have made it better than me.
And, and you guys will know better than I whether it's best structured as one or two, but we would also at least request conceptual endorsement of the idea of setting aside that money in the event that we do obtain the grant, so that we can represent to the state that we do have prospective funding backing the application.
That might be cleaner as a second, as a second motion, just since it's appropriation. But do you want to?
How do you want that stayed?
Let's, well, let's, let's vote. Do we have, Commissioner Mays, do you want to?
I was just going to ask, the funding mechanism, is that something we should discuss? Is that going to be brought up during the budget?
On budget.
Okay, I didn't want to skip ahead.
Okay.
We're already there.
We spoke to that issue at length.
So it's, it's on, that's already on the budget agenda? Okay. Any, any other discussion on Commissioner White's motion? Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to hear from the mayor and see what her thoughts are, especially, we're talking about a memorandum of understanding, and see if the mayor's got any feedback before I take any action. And then, far as the finance, and I had to leave budget meeting early that night, I got a lot of questions on, to Commissioner Mays' point, where would the funding come from? And I thought I heard $150,000 a month. Is that right?
Correct.
Yes, sir. It would be, it would be up to $150,000 a month. It, it could be that we are denied all the grants, or maybe we get one that's just for $45,000, and we, we don't know at this point.
Okay, and so I, I'd want to know, I'm, I'm in favor of everything you said, General. I just want to make sure we have all the parts in place and how we're going to fund it, what, what fund we'd use. And then, when the funds come back, wherever those funds go, are they going to go into the general fund? Back, are we expecting to take these funds out of the general fund? I mean, those, so those are some of the questions I have, but I'd like to hear from the mayor, her thoughts. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
With regard to the funding, Commissioner Wondell, we do that all the time. When we receive a grant, what the finance department does is they'll set that up in a revenue code. They recognize the revenue. Robbie would dedicate it. It would be identified. So if you think back, for instance, when we did the grants from the governor that were the direct allocation, where we could use it for capital needs and IT and, and that, I think it was a hundred, no, gosh, I can't even remember. Was it a million dollars? A million dollars? What you all saw come in front of you was S, like it had a cost center on it, SDAG, for State Direct Allocation Grant. It would be the same way. Finance Department would probably put those initials on there, that this would be the state law enforcement grants. I'm in favor of applying for all of these. My only concern is with regard to the domestic violence portion. Because this has come across, come down the pike so quickly, we have not had time to get together and actually have a conversation with me, but I did talk with the sheriff today and Chief Galloway, and did express that some of my concerns on that portion were what happens when the grant dries up, because that's a pretty cost-intensive operation to continue to maintain a shelter, the staffing. It would be something where, you know, obviously, it would be very difficult to say, no, we don't have the funds. So it's those great balancing acts that we have to, we have to look at, and it sounds hard-hearted of me to even raise that as a concern, but as you heard tonight, you heard a sheriff's deputy talking about salary. You talk about a lot of things that we have to balance in government. So that would be the only thing that I would want to, you know, further conversations with the, the Attorney General. He's been helping us take the lead on looking at a domestic violence coordinator through the courts. Judge Bowling and Judge Tucker are looking at that. The general and I did discuss that in terms of what does that look like when that grant goes away? Is it something where we're training up existing staff? Because again, you know, with many grants, once the grant dries up, then what? And then what does it mean to the rest of the ongoing operations? So that's the only thing. Those are details that we could talk about. I know the Family Justice Center has, you know, been working very diligently on the process of a nonprofit, and I know county government has helped in many regards with ARP funding and helping support that. We help support salary there. So I know, there's just a lot of give and take. So that's my only, I guess, reservation, small reservation.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And then we'll discuss the budget portion under, under the Budget Committee. Thank you, General Clark.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have the approval and correction of agendas. We'll start with the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the regular agenda. Any additions? Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add, under committee reports, under budget report with Mr. Holbrook, something that we had learned over the week, this past week after the Budget Committee, the, the 911 board voted to give dispatchers a stipend, similar to what they get at corrections, and similar to what the state pays certified patrol officers. And so going through the process, the way the board voted, and then how it came down, the auditors have asked that, show it as a pass-through appropriately, that the, the payment that comes from 911 be receded into a revenue code. That way, it shows that they can increase the expenditure code to pay those out. While there is money in the salary code already, because we're, it's mid-year, they want to show that revenue coming in before it gets paid out to dispatchers.
Let's just add a change, discussion on changing the receding code under the budget.
And the last one, if I may, is a resolution that Mr. Jaeger's passed out. It's resolution under the Law Director's report, if we could. Resolution 22-11-971 regarding designating dispatchers as first responders that we talked about at operations.
We'll just make that item G under the Law Director's report.
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other changes? Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The plea of the commission, I'd like to add, resolution, I guess we can put it under new business. That would be acceptable. Resolution number 2022-11-972, and that is in regards to a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to commence the required process for the detention facility to become an accredited correctional facility under the Tennessee Corrections Institute rule, and that's specifically entitled Tier One standards and Tier Two standards.
Okay. Put that under new business. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve as amended? And a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Foster to approve as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next, we'll go to the public hearing report. Vice Chairman Val.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Tonight, we had two public hearings. The first one was a public hearing, Resolution Number 22-11-965, and that was amending the zoning resolution of Anderson County, Tennessee by rezoning parcel 14.03, Anderson County Tax Map 087 from A2 Rural Residential District to C1 General Commercial District. And if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, we will take those individually.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger to approve?
This is the Oliver Springs property. I'm sorry.
That's the Oliver Springs parcel, seconded by Commissioner Mays, to approve. Any, any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote. Thirteen yes, one no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And the next one was a public hearing, Resolution Number 22-11-966, amending the zoning resolution of Anderson County, Tennessee by rezoning parcel 4.06, Anderson County Tax Map 003 from A2 Rural Residential District to A1 Agricultural Forestry District.
Motion to approve or reject? Commissioner Allen. Is that a motion, motion for approval?
This is a motion for disapproval.
Motion, motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Varan. Commissioner Mays.
Just to confirm, we're voting, this is a motion to deny, right?
To deny.
And I, I.
Is it, are you, is this, you're making a motion to deny? Okay, okay.
I just wanted to, I'll be voting no, just, you know, I'm not anti-growth. I don't think anybody is, but to what end? You know, I, I think, you know, hearing their voice tonight, and, and hearing all the citizens and the emails that we have received.
Well, so if this is a motion to deny, then yes is to deny, and correct.
Yeah, sorry. You get my drift.
Yeah. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As always, always respect whatever the commissioners want in their district, because they know the best. And I know sometimes it may put you on the spot, but if you don't mind, I'd like to hear, you know, what, what you all think, because that's who I support. Thank you.
Commissioner Vandergriff.
Thank you. As I believe it was Ms. Whitaker alluded to, we received several emails, I think somewhere up towards, I believe, over thirty emails of the fifty or so residents or fifty or so owners in, in that development. And I didn't receive any that were in favor of this zoning resolution change. So everyone was opposed to it, so I will be voting to oppose the resolution change.
Thank you. And, and yeah, without, I know, we, Chairman shouldn't speak on a lot of motions, so I'll, I'll echo. I was, had a busy afternoon with the email from, same as Commissioner Vandergriff. Any other discussion? Commissioner Foster.
Can we have Commissioner Isbell speak from Plenary Commission? What was the discussion? Why y'all sent it to for rezoning?
Well, that's why, you know, I was trying to do that during the public hearing, is when it comes to, for us to look at, is there's just checks and balances, there's boxes to fill out, and there's not anyone there either to speak for or against, other than the one that applies. And what they'll mostly do is they'll come in and they'll get pre-approval for they spend a lot of money. And then, once the rezoning and they fall in line, they, everything that they did was in line with what could be done, because a year and a half ago, or almost two years ago, this body approved similar, right down the street. So they were in the guidelines of having this done. So it always comes, and we tell everybody that it's pending commission approval. So that's when you really hear, because that's when the notices go out, because if it doesn't get through planning and zoning, there's no need for the notices to go out, and that gives the people opportunity to come and speak, so.
I, I would just like to comment on some feedback I've received from a lot of people that, that the- that the, and I realize the schedule's tight because planning is on the second Tuesday and we meet on the third Monday. If there was a way to get those certified letters out prior to the Planning Commission, I think, I think that would get more traffic to the Planning Commission. I think, I think people are here tonight because they found out about it after the Planning Commission. So I know that's, logistically, that might be difficult, and I don't know how long the application process is when you're getting a zone change or something. But if we could back it up where they, I think people would feel a little less blindsided if they could go to the Planning Commission and see the process from that end.
Yeah, it's usually 30 days. Like, we took this up last month, so it's 30 days later before it comes before full commission, so they can. And it may be something that we can take up in Planning Commission about more of a notice instead of being redundant about, you know, all the certified, but some way to get more of a notice. And I think Danny does go ahead and put out a sign first, maybe, or there's some type of notification. No, it's done in the paper. That's how it's done. Is that, is how it's taken up now. I know not everybody, you know, looks at the paper. But maybe there's something else that we can do, but I'm sure that I'll talk to the Chairman and see if it's something we can put on our agenda.
Okay. Any other discussion? And we'll go to the board and vote. Yes is to deny. Motion passes. Is there anything else?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Next, we'll have departmental presentations. Human Resources, HR Director Kim Jeffers-Whitaker.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. I promised to be brief. On page four of your county commission packet, you will find the HR Advisory Committee meeting minutes for October. About midway down the page, under the HR Director's report, item one, is the approval of the county's 2022-2023 fiscal year mid-max comp plan. That includes the county commission-approved general increase that went into effect on 7/1 of this year. Tonight, I am submitting for your approval, the compensation plan updates. That is also located, I think it's on pages 11 through 14 of your county commission packet.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Kim, could you briefly cover what we would be, what we, it would happen here if we vote for this?
So all it is, is in 2008, a little bit of history. In 2008, this body approved a compensation plan for Anderson County. Since then, especially since the past few years, what we've been doing is updating that compensation plan to reflect the general increases that is approved by county commission. When, when Budget Committee came to or charged HR with doing a review or an analysis on this a few years ago, we've tried real hard to make sure that we get that updated and out to the department heads, so they have that to utilize in their hiring and any time that they're looking at increases. What you would be approving in no way impacts employee's current salary. Okay? It is a guideline for the department heads to use. This is simply something that we've done since that review that allows our department heads the plan across the board, so everybody's on the same page, and looking at what those salaries would be based upon that level or title. Does that help?
Yes. And that level has already been approved by the commission?
Yes. Yes, all that has been modified on here is the July 1 compensation general increase, which was the raises, the 5% was applied to that. That's it.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, the funding from that, because it's up to the, to the department head to fund, is that correct? So that would come out of their budget?
Correct.
Okay.
This in no way impacts anybody's salary. Again, it is a guide, a base, if you will, for them to utilize in setting salaries and coming to you all with that. It in no way impacts increases or decreases anybody's salary.
So it's a recommendation to department heads as a guideline?
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's also been approved by the HR Advisory Committee, which is made up of our elected officials.
Commissioner Yeager.
No, just a motion.
Oh, motion, motion, motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all. Wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Next, tourism, Tourism Director Stephanie Wells. She might be out in the hall. There she is.
Good evening. And I'm here tonight, I think you have a sheet in your packet about our building. So earlier this year in June, we approved to surplus the Welcome Center to put it up for auction. And we, the next step in that process, after your all's approval, was to get a auctioneer. So we went through that process. And then, once we set on auctioneer, we auctioned the building off last Tuesday, November the 15th. And part of that approval process was that we have a minimum bid, and we received that minimum bid before we proceed to sell the building. So the minimum bid was $600,000, and the bid came in at $630,000. So you should have a sales, a buy-sell agreement, I think, in your packet that details all that information for you. So tonight, we just need final approval for the sale of that building.
Motion to approve the sale of the building. Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Although initially, I was in favor of the sale of the building, but it was all contingent on what you're going to do with the money and move in with the chamber. And hopefully, we were going to have a MOU and a contract at operations to go over. And what I want to avoid, although I respect Stephanie and everybody else that's involved very much, and I'm on that board and I approve that, but for the ones that wasn't here during the 205 Main Street debacle, I don't want to get into something like that until I see, because my constituents said, how do you vote for something that you don't read, that you don't have a contract on? And all I'm saying is, you know, if it was my place, you know, if I would have made the motion, I'd say defer it for 30 days until we see a copy of the contract, the MOU. But I did, you know, support the sale, but, you know, that was contingent on what they were going to do with the money. Because what if something falls through? And I understand that the piece of property, now that the chamber has bought, is bought under a lien. You know, it's, they got a loan at the bank. So how is that going to work out? Does Anderson County pay for their half of the property? And these are the things I want to see in writing, because we can all, including, you know, the Tourism Director and everybody else, things can change until you get it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to defer a motion or you want to wait for discussion?
Well, I mean, you've already made a motion to. Well, yeah, that would. That would be my motion to defer for 30 days until we get the contract and MOU to go over.
Just to say again, I'm waiting on the information.
Oh, I understand.
Until I get the information.
We are unable at this time until we get a amount. But as we stated before, the amount, we will not go into debt on a new building. And the, and the property will be zero lot-lined. We will own our property. We will purchase our property from the chamber. We will own our portion of the property. So any liens that the chamber is obligated to will not be our responsibility. So that will be too different. We have to approve this sale before we can enter into a contract to purchase. They have to know that, yes, we have sold this property in order to enter into a contract to buy anything. So this is just a step in the process. It's not, you know, one is contingent on the other, basically. We can't enter into an agreement until we have sold this property and received these funds.
Mr. Chairman, but we don't know what, you know, the agreement is until we see the contract and MOU. And that's, you know, I'm not saying that I'm against it, won't vote for it going forward, but I just want to see it in writing because, you know, it's, it can be pretty contentious with our voters.
Let me get Commissioner Foster.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're just voting to approve the sale of this building. I sit on the tourism board. The commission, obviously, the board supported this. We got more than what we had to get out of it. I don't think we're going to get any more. If you went to, you know, we got what we wanted and plus more. We're not agreeing to anything else besides we are selling the building that we already agreed, that commission agreed to surplus. We're not doing anything with the chamber or anything else on that MOU tonight. Correct? And that's what the motion, that's, Commissioner Yeager made the motion, I'm assuming that was to, when I second it, was to approve the contract, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Or approve the sale.
Commissioner Mays? Oh, sorry.
Hang on a second. I'm sorry. Just whenever you're ready, I'll make a comment on this.
Oh, go ahead.
There's actually two contracts. There's the sale of the building, that JD's did a brief little sale contract. My office is not involved in that. I sent out an email last week when we got it. That's for us to sell that building to the highest bidder. There'll be another contract, and that's the one that my office will do when we purchase our portion of this building up the street, the new building. At that same time, I'll put together an MOU defining the relationship of the parties, what's to be expected, where the common areas are, the utilities, those, those things of that nature. So we're looking at two different real estate contracts. One, where we're the buyer, that'll be in the future. One where we're the seller, and that's tonight. So just to give you some clarity on that issue, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mays?
You mentioned 630. I thought it was 690.
The, with the buyer's premium and with our contract with JD, we will receive half of that. So the actual purchase, the actual price that we will receive is 661.5, yes. So the, but the bid was for 630.
Okay. And Jay, I just have a question for you.
Sir.
I mean, you were here during, like Commissioner Isbell talked about 205. I mean, what kind of, what is your guidance on, on this? I mean, is this something that?
Put everything down on paper.
Is this something we should defer tonight?
Oh, I've, look, the gentleman that purchased this property, he didn't ask for any more detailed contract. And it says as-is, it's pretty straightforward, there's nothing to argue. And now, where we're the buyer, I'm going to spend a lot more time in detail on this contract. It's not going to be anything like you're looking at today. It's going to be a real estate sales contract. You've seen many of them, or purchase contract that I've done here, they're highly detailed. That's, you'll see one of those come forward when we purchase this new building, or the lot and the construction on that. But as far as I'm concerned, when you do any of these deals, you memorialize every detail on the contract. And the MOU will be something that defines all the party's relationships going forward and what happens, you know, in the future.
Right. Still want to do anything that's detrimental tonight.
I don't think we can be hurt here tonight because the gentleman evidently is satisfied with this one-page real estate contract. You know what the details are. He's buying it as-is, under auction terms, basically, and we sold it for more than the minimum bid that you approved here. We get half of the buyer's premium. So financially, we're in a better shape. It's not a situation where I worry about liability on this. We're selling our building, you're fully aware of that about this, as I think it's been talked about for six, seven months. But it's up to you to go forward with it. I can provide you with more information, but I think this gentleman is satisfied with this one-page contract they've got.
Thank you. But before I get Commissioner Palmer, just to clarify, since we've got quite a few new commissioners and we've been talking about this for several months, that, the building that you have that we're vote, about to vote on, it was purchased with your hotel-motel tax revenue. So this isn't property tax money, that sort of thing? And you're not asking for any property tax money to subsidize the department? So it's?
The way I understand it, they have the money for the new building, everything they need, furnishings. You're not, you're prepared, the tourism fund is prepared to take care of all the expenses, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And, and that, this is county property still and commission has the vote, but it's also not a situation where we can, the state, the state says when, when you've got hotel-motel tax, it's got to be for tourism and that sort, it's not like we can say, well, we'd rather put the money over.
Correct.
Here to do something. So just, just to kind of clarify for new commissioners, but go ahead, Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Where will you be located if that building sells until the new building is built?
Our operations will be split. Part of our operations will be at DARC if, if we were going to look tomorrow to make sure that that works for us. And then the other part of the operations will be in the existing chamber facility. So kind of our public area where people can come in and get information will be located there.
Okay. Will you be required to pay rent?
No. No, ma'am.
And I have had several calls on this as well. And, and I'm not opposed to it or anything, but I would, I understand the closing dates, January the 6th.
Yes.
Do, if we deferred this till the December meeting, would we not have an opportunity to have that MOU before the closing? It's not like we're saying the sale's not going to go through, but we could get that information and see it with our own eyes before the closing?
We will not be able to do an MOU until the building is constructed and then it's determined on what space is shared and what expenses are going to be covered there, so as we go through the construction process. And we can't really start the construction process until we have a confirmed that this is how much money we have to spend. Because that's all we're going to spend is what we have in reserve and then what this building sold for. So we're, you know, we're not going to spend any more than that, than what we have. So that, with our purchase price, you know, the sales contract with the chamber will state that.
Anything that you want to add to that?
Does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Not really.
I'm sorry, it just caught me off guard. I always thought the MOU would be contemporaneous with the purchase contract up here, but if I, Commissioner Palmer, we're ready to move forward any time. I just need the materials, the information from Stephanie and Mr. Meredith. If we get that one week, I'll have it done the next.
Of course.
But I can promise you that, we're not going to sit on it. But right now, we just don't have that information. And what she said tonight, just a few minutes ago, is she won't have the information for the MOU until we do the purchase contract.
Okay.
I would just. I mean, the architect is, has drawn plans and they're still very much in the draft stage. There's not any schematics to that yet because basically if we do not sell our building and agree to, to buy a part of theirs, then the chamber will be moved forward with their portion of the building that doesn't include us. So we really can't do anything with the architects and get into that next stage of the schematics until we say, until we are confirmed that, yes, we've sold the building, we're going to, to enter into a new building with them. Does that make sense?
I just really would like to have something in writing, some sort of details in writing before we, you know, let go of that property and, and you're saying we're moving forward in this thing, but we've not seen anything in writing. So I'm just.
You've got, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Palmer, you've got a sales contract. It's a one-page piece of paper that was done by JD's.
Okay.
Auction. That's the sales contract to the new buyer of the old Welcome Center.
Okay.
And you'll see, like I said, you'll see in the future, an MOU from us and a purchase contract on the new.
So we So, we can't have any information on this new endeavor till after January 6th, till after this is closed. But this is the closing date on this property?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't think you'll have anything on the purchase contract by then?
It would, well, I guess we could. I mean, logistically, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking through my mind. And-
We can try to do it. Let's, is that, if you get the information-
Let me ask JD, as far as the sales goes, do we just hold it and move forward? I mean, if I, because we require my board to meet, to get an agreement, and then, based on the sell, this proposed sale price?
Stephanie, there's a potential that-
Do you want to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, there, there is the potential that we could close early. Of course, that's going to fall within the buyer's perspective. I, I don't know if the buyer can close early. We can certainly communicate and ask that, if that helps the situation. If we do, though, if we do stall and wait until December or potentially January, I'm not sure the buyer will, will wait. I mean, I can only ask. I don't, I can't ask at this very moment.
Well, they're willing to wait till January 6th.
Sure.
Right?
To close. To, to, yes, Commissioner, to actually close on it, but not to wait to see if they're, right now, we're holding 63,000-
Okay.
-of their deposit with the good faith money that they're going to close on the building.
I mean, there's a process that they need to go ahead and get started. And then, if it doesn't close, then, so.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess my concern is this MOU. What is your reasoning to not want to defer until the MOU is done?
Well, I mean, the, the MOU will just simply kind of outline the understanding of the, of us occupying the building together. In other words, it'll address issues like outside landscaping, you know, any shared parking, any of those shared spaces. So, it doesn't really have anything to do with the sale of the building or the purchase of a new facility. So, a sales contract that we would enter into with the Chamber is saying, before they start construction, would be, would be something that would outline to say, and I'm using rough numbers, it would say Anderson County will purchase 3,000 square feet at X amount of dollars per square foot. And there may be a contingency in there for overages or anything like that, a percentage contingency of something of that nature. But we would be able to control that price. So, in other words, if we have 661,000 in the bank, and we have some reserve, if we want to use that for furnishings, then we would back into that number. So, that's why, I mean, I've, you've been in this position for 20-plus years. And when I first started, we were in debt for a building.
Right.
And we, we really struggled to pay that payment every month, or every year. And so, it has, when I, when I had a discussion with the Chamber about this project, I stated to them numerous times, I am not going back in debt. I'm not going to put the county back in debt for a facility. And so, that is what I have stuck with. That's what I will stick with. So, we will not, you know, enter into debt. We are kind of, have to back into this number. That's why we wanted to sell the building, see what we got for the building. And then, that's when we will go and enter into a contract to purchase space from the Chamber for that amount of money. So, again, I mean, we're not going to be liable for anything that the Chamber builds for their facility. There'll be a, a zero lot line, and we will be responsible financially for our side, and they will be responsible financially for their side. The MOU will just be, what do we do with that shared space? Who cleans? Who takes care of the landscaping? You know, if there's a leak-
Of course. Yeah. How fast could that be done? How fast could you have it? Tomorrow?
Well, it's, it's almost, I mean, it's kind of, my board will have to meet to approve it first, but we almost have to back into the number. And I needed this number before I could go to the Chamber and say, we want to purchase X amount of square foot for X amount of dollars. So.
I guess because I hear this concern that we don't have that. And to many people, it seems to be something very, very important. You understand that, right?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. I understand. So, I mean, but the situation with 205 main-
The detriment would be, if you defer it, from your perspective, what would that detriment be?
That the buyer backs out.
Buyer backs out.
Yeah. And this is an existing commercial real estate developer in the area. I mean, I'm sure that they have plans for that space. So.
Let me get Commissioner Beauchamp and Vandergriff, and then we'll come back around and let Commissioner Foster and Isbell speak the second time. I just want to make sure everybody gets to speak once. Commissioner Beauchamp?
Thank you, Commissioner. I mean, Chairman. Stephanie, I don't want you to think that we're coming at you because we've had fiascos in this county.
I understand.
But what happens if you want more and the Chamber wants more, and there's no agreement? What's going to happen there? I think we need some kind of assurance that you guys are going to have to agree on space and you can't back out.
Sure.
I think that we need that. I think, I think this is a prime piece of property up there. I think that more people are moving to that area. I think if this guy backs out, there's going to be somebody else coming, maybe for more money. I don't know. But I think as a body, we deserve to get to see what is going on. This is my third meeting. I'm tired of things coming to me right before a meeting. And we've got to be able to read things. I don't think it's fair to the citizens and the taxpayers of this county that we're voting on things without knowing what we're voting on. We've seen this happen multiple times throughout this county over the years. And I, I don't think that we should be voting on things that we don't know what we're voting on.
Sure. Well, and I mean, we've, we've been transparent through this process. It's not that I've been trying to hide anything or say that we're going to come back and, you know, the Chamber's now going to want $2 million or anything of that, of that nature. The only, I guess, step at this point would be my, my board would need to meet to make a recommendation on an agreement, or we can draft an agreement, a sales agreement. And then, my board would need to meet on it. And then, if it comes back in December, I just don't feel like it could be done by December, honestly. Because I feel like the Chamber Board would need to meet on it, look at it. I just don't see it happening by December. I don't want to rush anything. I want you all to feel very comfortable with this. Again, we've been dealing with this for a year. We, you know, my board approved it last January. And then, in June, we agreed to sell the building, surplus the building, and sell it. So, I guess, I thought I was following the steps that we were supposed to follow and the nature of this development. So.
Do you know all the details on the purchase? See, I thought you did, according to Mr. Meredith, on the purchase of the new property?
Yeah.
And that's why we can't get a purchase contract.
The only issue we don't know at this point is that we have a range of a price. So, we're looking at our section being 3,000 square feet. Right now, the architect is telling us that it could be between 200 to 250 dollars a square foot. And that, you know, that, anybody in the building industry right now knows that, yes, 200 to 250 is a large range. But things change, you know, things happen. So, that's, that's kind of the preliminary details of where we are.
And that's exactly what Commissioner, Mr. Meredith told me. It's not that they're not showing you the cards. They just don't have them yet. Commissioner Meredith told me before, he says, I just don't have the data back. I don't have the architectural stuff. They've commissioned the architect. So, we don't know. We don't know the cost until we get the final design. We can't even begin to compute the cost, especially with building materials right now. But they, we're seeing that start to level out at a higher level. Again, they, it's not that they're withholding any information. They just don't have the information. In fact, Rick didn't have the material last Monday before operations from the architect. And evidently, he still doesn't have it. So.
And this project's a little bit different. I'm sorry, I didn't mean you're right. But we're backing into a price. We're saying, I mean, you don't often say, I have X amount of dollars, and this is what we want to build for that. It's usually, this is what we'd like to build. Now, you tell me how much it's going to cost. We're backing into it.
Commissioner Vandergriff.
Thank you, Chairman. I just had a question about the sign. Was the sign, the electronic sign, is that part of the sales price, or?
No, it's not. That, that is actually, we're working right now to transfer that sign to one of our schools that could use that. Because it's about a $25,000 value. And so, we're going to transfer that to another school or two of our schools to use.
One of the, the, that area's schools?
It'll, it'll actually be one of our elementary schools in the county, yes. It's a county school.
Okay.
Commissioner Foster.
So, a couple of questions, or not questions, I guess, statements. So, as, because I've been on the board on the tourism side of things. But if we were to, let's take the Chamber out of it, and we were just going to sell this building, which is a prime piece of property and prime area that's seen a lot of development, that's putting back on the tax roll. If everything fell out with the Chamber, we, we could go build another building somewhere else and be in a better location for tourism. That would not be a prime piece of property that, it, so, what I'm saying is like, let's take the Chamber side out of it. That's not even on the table right now theoretically. I know, because we're not agreeing on that tonight. But would you say we should sell this property, even if we weren't going to build over the Chamber and say, let's go find another piece of property that's less valuable than a building that fits our needs as tourism now compared to it was 20 years ago? Because the tourism industry has changed, that we don't need that prime piece of property anymore because we don't have the visitors to, that's how I'm looking at it compared to the Chamber. Because I understand, we don't have all the information about with the Chamber. But we're not agreeing on that tonight. We're agreeing to sell this prime piece of property that sold for, how much more than the property behind it that sold for?
It didn't sell at 350.
350. We got 630. That doesn't mean if we did this resale, would we get that same price? And we could come out. And JD could probably speak on that better than us. But that would be, I don't think we, even if we weren't doing so with the Chamber, I don't think we should vote no to sell this property. We're not agreeing to do anything with the Chamber tonight. We are agreeing, we are saying we want to sell this property for the price that we needed and above. Even if we don't go there, we can go somewhere else for a lot cheaper than that piece of property and build a building. If we decide we don't want to go with the Chamber, we need to move out of that location because it doesn't fit our needs. And it fits the county to get that back on the tax roll and start paying, getting the taxes on it, on a prime piece of property. It will be developed. Look all around. It will be developed.
Good work, please.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Davenport is the one that's purchasing the building. And he did the property, the development right across the street.
Yes.
And if you want to go on to the property assessor's website, you can see how much was paid for all the property across the street. And for the new commissioners, when we first approved this, when it come out of commission, it was as a plan, not single. And, and the plan was, is that the property's sold, and they'll go in conjunction with the Chamber. And I believe, and I could be wrong, but I think it was said that, you know, it would be paid for a donation from the Chamber side. So, that's why I'm saying, I want to see what's going to happen. Because the plan was, and, and, you know, I brag on Stephanie and the Tourism Bureau all the time. Do a terrific job. I'm just saying, I want to see because it was proposed as a plan, the plan was to sell and to build, to go in to, with the Chamber, buy this piece of property. But I want to see everything in writing. Like I said, I know I'm going back to 205 Main Street debacle, and it still hangs around our neck. Because I still get questions about that to this day. You're not going to do that again. And very, one of the very prominent families in District Four and District Three has asked me, surely, you're not going to vote on something that you don't see in writing. And I tried to explain the differences, and they said, but the ultimate goal was what we saw, was that it was going to be sold, it was going to be moved into this one piece of property. Now, I understand about the tourism industry has changed. And I agree with that. But what if you sold that, and, you know, if, if you moved into where the Chamber's vacating? And the other thing that, that puts a little skepticism to me is that the ACEDA board was going to be moving in. I sit on the ACEDA board as well. I go to the ACEDA board meeting, and the chairman of the ACEDA board wasn't so favorable, you know, because they can stay in that building for a lot less money than having to go pay rent somewhere else. So, I, I'm not so sure that the ACEDA board's going to move in there. I haven't voted on it. I don't know if the mayor's voted on it. But I don't think it's come, come to that. So, these are the things that I think, I really need to see everything in writing. But, thank you.
Commissioner Mays?
A couple of questions. The first one's more about parliamentary procedure. If there's a motion to defer, does that, is that not in discussion, and we vote on it at that point?
We don't have one yet.
I thought there was an amendment to your motion.
No, I was just asking the question. It has not been made.
Okay. Well, then, I have just one thing to say. And I appreciate Commissioner Foster, his insight. I think the hard part for me is the fact that I can't picture this without the Chamber. Because it is in the web of this real estate deal. And so, I, I think Stephanie does a tremendous job, and she has her, it makes sense to sell the property. It really does. But it just, I mean, there's just, there's just, there's just no information out there for me to feel comfortable about pulling the trigger tonight.
If, if I could ask JD, if we defer this until the December meeting, which is December the 16th, am I, is am I correct in that date?
Yeah.
Sorry. Would we be able to still close on the 6th? Or is that a discussion? Would we be able to keep this, this auction valid, or would we have to conduct another auction?
That's a great question, Stephanie. But unfortunately, I can't answer that. Because I don't know what the developments, what, what the Davinsports will say. All I can do is call them. I know the, all the terms and the conditions of the auction stated that I would not sell, I would not say sold on auction day. I would say, we're going to hold the bid and wait to, and take it to the other commission so you could vote. So, all the commissioners could vote tonight. That was the pretense that all the buyers purchased or showed up and bidded on, was the pretense of the vote would happen tonight. Now, clearly, you're going to have a vote at some point here to either defer or to approve or deny. So, all I can do at that point is go back and ask. There is no guarantee, though, that, that the Davinsports will say, yes, we'll wait until December, or we will defer. I don't know.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Yeager.
I'm still in favor of the sale. I'm also concerned about the MOU. And I don't, I may need JD to help me understand why an MOU can't be written in advance of a commitment to, to buy into a piece of property.
It can be written at any time. But my office, when I have the data and the information.
Okay. I, I would love to see an MOU.
But the way I understand it, they don't have the architectural information-
Sure.
-which is going to be very hard to describe the relationship of the parties going forward in the MOU. They don't have a design on the building, is what it amounts to. That's, that's going to be very difficult until we get the architectural drawings back, we get the estimates.
Well, then, we, we have a place to, to park until the purchase and move in to that new building. Is that right? Is that what you told us?
Yes. We have a temporary location to house our operations, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm still in favor of this. Worst case, I think, is we sit on 600-some thousand dollars until a good solid MOU is understood by this body.
Yeah. I mean, we definitely can't move forward with purchasing anything from the Chamber until you all see a contract and approve that.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I mean, I feel like we've fulfilled our obligation of selling the structure for 630, for over 600,000. Now, we move forward with the Chamber. And, I mean, if you all need to include, amend your motion to say, you know, the tourism funds will pay for this, tourism will not go into debt, whatever those agreements or stipulations you all would like to place on it, I will abide by those.
I'm happy enough with the motion as is.
Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to apologize for my ignorance about buying and selling. I, I learn something new every time this comes up for discussion, but I also get more and more confused. My wife usually does the buying and the selling in our family. She's a much more tougher negotiator than I am. I want to apologize to JD and Bear and Missy and all of them out there. I love and respect each and every one of them. But there's, to me, there's just too much confusion. And it's probably my fault. And it's probably not yours. But I, I keep, feel like I'm on a merry-go-round, spinning around and around and around with this. And it seems like I'm, I'm getting more questions than I am answers every time this comes up for discussion. And again, maybe I need to put forth some more effort to learn a little bit more about it. But we call this for a vote tonight. I'll be voting no on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beauchamp.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to make a point that we've had a lot of fiascos with the Jolly Building, with the Juvenile Court, Bus Terminal Road with Division Two. There's been a lot of things going on, 205 Main. We need to watch this. I'm not saying anything's going to go wrong, but we, these are taxpayer funds, this is their stuff. And we've got to make sure that we do it right. We've been doing it wrong. We keep getting in these deals with architects and then they come back and say, "Oh no, we need $100,000 more." "We didn't put an air conditioner unit on this." We've got to be careful and watch for those things.
Commissioner Foster.
Sorry, I just had a question for JD. What was the second, second closest bid? Does that information can disclose?
$625,000.
Okay.
$5,000.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was opposed to selling our property. We had a commissioner that used to sit over here, Commissioner Vandergriff's seat, that would say, "Never sell county property. It's an investment that the taxpayers made." I understand we use hotel, motel tax money. Irrespective of that, it's still property in Anderson County. It's in Anderson County's name. I was opposed to selling the property and the main reason I was opposed to it was we don't have a plan. You know, we can sell it today for $700,000. Great, bring in the check. Now what? We're going to wait how long? We don't know. How much is it going to cost? We don't know. $250,000 times 3,000 square feet is $750,000, not $630,000. Not mad at you, but I know it's a price, but here's where I'm at. Why would we shut down a tourism facility and not have a place to go? And I think I heard you say, "Well, we're going to move to Daniel Arthur." Well, then move to Daniel Arthur. I guess my question is, why are we doing these things? And I guess I'll use this last analogy. I would never sell my house, Mr. Chairman, with no place to go. I would sell it if I had a place and I think the word they use is contingent. You can get a plan in place with the chamber and whoever else and make it contingent on all these things, you know? And I don't know why we don't have that agreement with all these contingencies in it. You know, it sounds nice to say, "I want to sell it and get the money in my hand and pay it all and then get the price given to me," but that's not the way it works. And so I'm going to vote no again. I'm not in favor of giving up the property. I wasn't in favor of it before. I think I even mentioned to you before, I'd be more willing to enter a bond and keep the property because it really concerns me, one commissioner, that we're going to do away with the tourism location until sometime in the future. And we had to put $20,000 to $25,000 up for contingency money to take us through until the building might be finished, right? Isn't that what we did?
Yes. We are not going to use those funds because as I said that night, I would try to find somewhere that would not cost us anything and I have done that. I feel just kind of looking at kind of your faces, I mean, quite honestly with you, to be honest with you, I would rather go back to the buyer and ask them for an extension and then bring to you all an agreement in December versus you all voting no for this tonight. That's just my, I don't, you know, this to me is a positive thing. I'm very excited about the opportunity that a new facility will offer our county and offer our visitors, our residents, people that are looking to bring their industry to our area. I'm very excited about the possibility of a new facility. I feel 99.9% sure that it's going to happen. If you all need more information, if you need to have an agreement in front of you for you all to feel that level of comfort, then I'm happy to provide that for you. I can't guarantee the buyer will still be available. It is a prime piece of property. It is in high demand. Maybe they'll stick around and see what happens in December, but I would rather, quite honestly, to do that and bring you all a sales contract with the chamber than you vote it down tonight. I'm just kind of gauging the environment here and I would rather see a defer to December.
I don't know. Thank you, Stephanie. This contract on real estate, it doesn't have a time period on it. It just says closing on January 6th. I don't know if the buyer can pull out. We've still got another county commission meeting in December. I'm like Stephanie, I'd like to get some more information. When we do, we'll expedite whatever we need to get before you, but I, looking at this contract, I don't know if he can get out. It says, the only date in here is that we'll close on January 6th. JD, do you interpret it any different?
No, Dan, it's just the terms and the conditions that he agreed to upon registration to be able to bid.
Is anything in there that's?
Was.
It'll be approved by county commission. We all knew that.
It would, the voting would happen by the county commission.
No specific date, right?
No, no specific date. It just simply says that we're going to give him 45 days to close.
Right, and John is a very reputable businessman and we, most of us know him. He's not going to back out unless there's valid reason. I think you've got another meeting here to take this up. And Stephanie, if you would, if you get any information, get it to me. I'll get it to county commissioners. We'll try our best to get at least an MOU together for the relationship going forward. But looking at this contract, I think we've got another meeting that we can act on it. If that's okay with y'all. Now, it's totally rest in your, whatever you want to go with tonight.
Commissioner Varan.
Yeah, Ms. Wells. Do you have a location idea for your new location?
Yes, it is on Main Street, just on the corner across from Knott's Florist and Samuel And right now, I mean, the preliminary drawings is a 12,000 square foot facility of which we would occupy about approximately 3,000 square feet. So we will all have, I will work diligently with my board and with the chamber and hopefully by the next meeting have an agreement in front of you all stating that.
So it'll be downtown here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As opposed to out by the interstate where this property is?
Correct, correct. And I know that that's still a concern for a lot of people and I've even had some people ask me why in the world we would move from the interstate. If you look at our visitation, it is down. Last week, we had nobody. All of October, I believe that the number was 25. We used to see 250 to 500 people in the month of October. So trends have changed. Cell phone usage has changed. I think that's part of COVID. Everybody walks around with a supercomputer in their hand and they're very dependent on it. You look at it for everything. People are walking around with a virtual brochure and a virtual map. And so then the question is, well then, why do you need a facility? And I can bring, last month, I believe, in our, October, the drawings were in your packet because they were given to our board. And so if you look at the drawings, there's a lot of meeting space. There's additional office space that will be used for transient workers or for transient business activities. And so in other words, that's people that have moved to the area, that are looking for a professional space to have a meeting and also group meeting space. So that's, again, the industry has changed and we have to adapt and change with it.
Commissioner Is.
Just one thing with operations, Chairman. I did talk with Jay several times by email, trying to get this packet ready for operations to consider, to at least have the weekend. Of course, you know, he was in constant contact with Mr. Meredith, trying to get things done and, you know, several attempts, but they just couldn't put it all together in that amount of time.
He's waiting on the...
Yeah, and I think what he said in operations, you know, he said he was in no hurry, you know, to get it done. It's not something had to be done then. So, you know, we just can't put the cart before the horse. Thank you.
There is an issue that's, and I've asked Rick to address this and I hope, hope he has, and that is to make sure that the City of Clinton Planning Commission is okay with a zero lot line. And that is something I want to make sure we're okay with. They've got a planned unit development situation there that may allow it, but that's normally used for residential purposes. But I, we've run into some issues with Clinton Regional Planning Commission before and I want to make sure they are okay with this building design and us using a zero lot line layout.
And more familiar with lawsuits with him for the county and that because we don't know that they're going to approve that zero lot line. So we're going into this without knowing that that's going to happen.
Well, I'm...
I mean, we assume...
Mr. Meredith is well aware of this. We've talked about it months ago and he said that he believes it's going to be approved, but I want to see that approved.
Commissioner Smallridge.
Stephanie, it sounds like this is probably not going to happen tonight. Do you have a good feel, I'm sure you do, for what information people have mentioned they want to have when, you know, I just want, when you come back to the commission, I want to make sure that you have and we have all the information that we need.
Sure.
So there's...
Absolutely. And if anybody has any other questions, please reach out to me, contact me. You know, again, we've been going through this process for a year, so I thought a lot of these questions were already answered, but I'm happy to talk with anybody kind of offline and then if y'all have any questions. So the process will be, my board will meet, we'll get a contract together that's agreeable with the chamber and with us. My board will meet to approve it or to review it and then I'm hopeful to take it through operations. So that way you all should have eyes on this several times before it comes before county commission meeting.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Commissioner Mays.
Can we just, do we need to formalize this as an amendment or do a new motion to defer?
Just...
Motion to defer to December 19th.
Thank you.
Motion to defer by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. Any other discussion on the deferral motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Let's go to the board and vote then.
This is a motion to defer, right?
This is the motion to defer.
Right.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have committee reports. We've got the purchasing report by Finance Director Robbie Holbrook. And be sure and pull your microphone down and speak into the microphone, getting some...
Sure. One thing I want to run you all of in the last discussion is, even if that building sold, all the funds go in a revenue code, anything before they could even do a contract would have to be approved by commission to move those funds. So you all have the final say on everything. We forget that sometimes. It doesn't go straight into an expenditure code where they can start using the money to make a purchase. It has to go in a revenue code and a budget amendment to be approved by commission. So just, that's just something to think about as well. So on the purchasing committee, contracts approved by the law director. There are four of them, all for EMS, seeking approval as a group.
Motion to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under contracts pending law director approval, they've all been approved now. There are four of them also, two for, one for EMS, two for the clerk and master, and one for EMA.
A motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Foster. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, another business, there are requests to surplus the following on gov. deals. The first one for the land has been deferred and the, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 vehicles, all starting bids at $250.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And under two, requested non-ate food trays from the detention facility to Scott County.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and under all businesses, for some informational purposes only, I think a couple of months ago, I remember the laundry equipment bid we did for the detention facility. The initial quote was for a total of $138,645 with delivery time of 12 to 16 weeks. With the bid process, we found a bid for $111,701 and installed the machines last week. So that was kind of a big win for the county. And a good job to stick it out to bid, to take the purchase out to bid. Tyler probably didn't agree with that. That's all I have for purchasing. Okay, under the budget agenda, the cash and fund balance report that I do each month for October, for the month ending October, the general fund, unaside fund balance 10.1 million, total fund balance 16,74,855 and the cash balance of 12,971,391. The 141 fund has a fund balance of $14,157,866, sorry, with a cash balance of 15,592,102. Any questions on the fund balance report? Each of these funds, it shows their restricted funds and their cash balance on the report.
I need to speak.
Commissioner...
Brian, could you take that motion off the board? That was from the last discussion.
The sales tax report, really quickly, for the month of September. The county as a whole collected 3.4 million, $3,423,705. That's down 9%. And the county portion is 477,157, down 11% from last September. Any questions on those two reports? Thank you. For the budget amendments, group two appropriations by the school, there are five of them, seeking approval as a group. I'd be happy to pull any out or answer any questions.
Motion to approve as a group, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Group four appropriations non-school, there are 13 of them, nine through 19 and 26 and
Motion by Commissioner Vowles, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and group six appropriations that affect the general fund unassigned fund balance, there are six of them. I've been asked to pull 23 and 24, so looking for approval for 20, 21, 22, and 25. Be happy to answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Foster, seconded by Commissioner Vowles. Any discussion? Commissioner Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you say item 21?
No, I did not. That's up for vote right now, yes.
Okay, I have a question about that. Just, that's the one about the animal care and control.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, do you have any idea what this enhanced security at the animal shelter facility and the partnership with the sheriff's department after hour calls? What that looks like?
The mayor respond to that.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioner, that is to install a camera and then a badge system like we have here in Anderson County government. So now there's just a key to get in. This would assign badges. It would be a badge reader that would record and then also it would allow us, we're working with the sheriff's department, a lot of after-hours calls, we really like to only respond and call someone out after hours if it's a dog bite or there's a wreck and there's an animal in a vehicle. But sometimes there are things like someone driving under the influence with a cat in their car. And those are things where the sheriff's department, and that has happened. So that's something where the sheriff's department could, if they had access to the facility, put the animal there. So we're working with them to construct a couple of secure... So, we're working with them to construct a couple of secure locations where they could have access with a badge reader as well, go in and put the animal there. So, it would be long-term in efficiency for, you know, the animal control and those additional comp time hours for the after-hours calls and it would provide better security facility, who's coming, who's going.
Okay. And that's at the existing facility?
Yes, yes.
And it can be moved?
It can be moved. I did check. Brian put those quotes together, Brian and IT, and I did verify with him that all of that can be moved.
Okay. Did this come out of like the committee, the animal shelter committee, the suggestion or...
I don't think they voted on that, but I did make them aware of that in a status report to the animal welfare committee.
Okay.
Commissioner Wondell, I don't think you all voted on that particular portion, did you?
Which portion was that?
The badge, doing a badge system there. I think I just reported that to you, but I did not ask for an endorsement vote, but maybe, I just can't recall.
Well, we accepted your memo as part of our, so that's the way I look at it. I didn't hear anybody speak against it.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, so up for vote right now is 20, 21, 22, and 25. If anybody has any other questions on those amendments.
I don't think we still need to vote on...
Yes, we do.
You're doing a separate vote. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I'll take 23 and 24 separately. 23 is the $5,032 for unassigned fund balance for legal fees, services for recovery lawsuits about a year ago, maybe six months. Jake would know exactly. Commission approved to try to recover some funds we had lost in two or three lawsuits and now we're starting to get, and we hired a legal team and now we're starting to get legal fees for these lawsuits. So, this is what the funds to pay for those legal fees.
Commissioner Allen.
Can you just tell us what lawsuit we're actually talking about? Maybe Jake can answer that.
I would like... Yeah, Jake, you want to speak to this?
I'm not familiar with these recovery lawsuits, Jake.
The $5,000 for the legal fees for the unassigned lawsuits. Oh, that's, they're representing us in a malpractice case against a former attorney. They've got two cases and that was their, I think their second bill they've sent us. But that's an attorney out of Nashville that specializes in this kind of stuff. It's been approved previously. Gosh, that was back in...
I was back in there about six months or a year.
May, something around that time.
If I was here.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Foster.
I also got a question for you, Jay, sorry. Of the 5,000, and this brought up in budget, are we asking for their legal fees also so like the malpractice, we're going back for the, we're suing the previous law firm for malpractice?
Right. And our legal fees too for recovering this money, yes.
So, yeah, so this, the 5,000 we're approving, we're going to, we're asking for that back?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything it takes to recover our money, our taxpayer money, we're asking for that back too.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good question.
We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 13 yes, one no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, 24 is for the charter commission for $12,540, $12,523 for printing for the charter commission and $17 for the rental of a facility in Oak Ridge that they had the meeting at. Only asking for $8,540 out of unassigned and $4,000 will be a transfer that, from legal services in the charter commission that was already in the budget.
Commissioner Jaeger.
Is this the end of the bills for the charter?
This should be the end. And I talked to Jay and he said when the charter started, the agreement was to spend, to try to spend less than $50,000. And with this amendment, we've spent a total of $44,42 in the last four years or so.
Well, that, was that money, I guess, in a reserve code or something? Does that just roll, what's left rolls back into the general fund or how does it?
It was always taken from unassigned. I don't, we probably started budgeting for it the last year or so for some fees. We paid for the legal services last year.
It's a statute in the charter selection that allows the 50,000. I believe it says no more than 50,000.
And so, the charter commission is now just defunct, dissolved or whatever? Okay. Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Jay. What does this money go to pay for?
That's the printing of the flyer, the postage. Actually had to be done by two different places. I didn't realize this in the world of printing, but there's companies that specialize in the ad dressing and the postage. Then there's another company that actually printed the stuff and I think we got an excellent deal, but when you send out one to every household that's got a registered voter, there's a lot of money involved in that, but I think we held it to a bare minimum.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 13 yes, one no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Under group seven miscellaneous, section A was the IT multi-factor plan presented by Brian Young. The motion by Jerry, Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Wondell to approve up to 40,000 of the existing $150,000 project allocation to fund the requested salary increase for the employee and the addition of a part-time employee and that motion passed. I need them...
I'm sorry. That policy has been approved by our office, the multi-factor authentication policy. If anybody's not clear with this, that's a small sum to pay for the protection we're going to get and I thank Brian for that, but I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that policy has been approved.
I need a motion to...
Yeah, we got a motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Under section B, the EMS replacement equipment, a motion was passed under group four appropriations already in number 27. Under section C, fire truck resolution presented by Shane Fowle, there was a, the motion was drawn, withdrawn and deferred to the operations committee for further discussion because apparently that's the committee that the fire truck resolution should be discussed in, and Shane...
I think that was to form the committee, wasn't it?
Like a task committee, yes. Under section, under new business D1, a grant opportunity by General Clark. We discussed this earlier tonight. The motion was approved to do the MOU for the, by the mayor or the sheriff. Also, just to speak about the funding really quick, we do these kind of grants all the time for, we increase revenue. So, like if we get a $250,000 grant, we're going to go ahead and increase revenue 250,000 and put it in expenditure code, the same 250,000 or different codes, wherever the money needs to be spent. And each month when that reimbursement comes in, it's, it's receded into that revenue code. But each year as part of the county audit by the state comptroller, any money that's spent in that fiscal year from that grant gets credited back in that fiscal year. So, we lose no money and you are upfronting a little money, but it will come out of your cash balance or out of the general, all this will become from the general fund. So, and be reimbursed back into the general fund.
Commissioner Wondell.
You can cancel. I had something else.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Jaeger.
This, I think I understand this right. This 150,000 each month is not a cumulative 150 each month. It's...
See, we were really, when he says that, he doesn't understand the process. We would, if the grant was for $2 million and it was for one year, we would go ahead and put $2 million in a revenue code and then it's not going to be that way. It's over two and a half years. Whatever they anticipate spending that first year, we would increase revenue for that amount and increase in expenditure code and it would just offset each other. And if they didn't spend, what they don't spend and they don't spend in expenditure code either, so we never lose any money.
Yeah, it's just a funny, funny way of wording it, but it's...
Yeah, that, I probably wouldn't have said that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Was your motion, Commissioner Wondell, to approve that or was it a separate?
No, it was on something else.
You know, I really don't need a motion to, that's just explaining the funding. We don't, I mean, when this, if this, if we do, are awarded that grant, it will come back to you all in a form of a contract and we would do it a budget amendment then that you would need to approve. So, it's kind of on the back burner until that, anything like that happens.
Did you want to make a motion on something else or did you have a question?
I'm over here lost in space. Clear me out, please.
Commissioner Mays.
I don't know if the general is still out there, but I maybe took it the wrong way. I thought he was asking tonight for the body to approve, commit that.
I think just like from a commitment from you, that if they applied for the grant, that you will support it. I mean, it's free money. That's 100%, you know, we're not, we don't have to fund anything. It would be kind of a no-brainer not to support the grant.
Well, I was thinking that the reason we split it up was for the mayor and/or sheriff to, to jump on board with the general on this and then in the budget committee that we would make a commitment either to, to fund this, should we be approved for what he's asking, or not fund it. I think that's, that was my understanding.
Yeah, and I'll make that motion just to be safe that we have it on the record saying we're going to support this if we get this grant. That's my motion. That worked.
It's your motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Mays?
Yeah.
The second, okay. Commissioner Wondell.
I mean, didn't we pass that motion earlier?
You did, yes.
I mean, why are we doing it again? I mean, I can understand if we're going to do a motion to put funds to it, but I think my thought was the general's going to go lay out the grants, mayor or the sheriff is going to endorse with the MOU and then come back to us and we'll know how much that amount is.
Right, it's a multi-year grant.
To say 150,000, let's lay it out there now. I think again, it's putting the cart before the horse, but if this, this motion is to put funding to it, I'm going to vote no because I don't know how much yet.
We can't put any funding to it. This is a multi-year grant. It will have to go through, the contract will have to be approved in the purchasing committee and then by commission. And like I said, a budget amendment will have to go to the budget committee and be approved and commission approve it as well. I mean...
And I may have heard general wrong on his...
Well, I'm the one that told him he could go ahead and leave because the, he kind of is misunderstood about the funding. We have to be awarded a grant to fund anything, so we don't even know if we're getting one.
No, right. I just, I think with his, to put that much time and effort, he wanted to make sure that there was a body of support.
His first request is that the mayor or the sheriff do a letter saying that the county would support this kind of a grant. And you all gave that approval tonight as well already, so I think we're good.
I'm good then. Draw that.
You withdraw, okay. Any other discussion?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Also under budget, under new business D2, the budget amendment for the county clerk was approved earlier, number 26. That's all that was on the budget committee agenda. I do have additional, two additional items, one that I put on there from the highway department, which is appropriation for 149,402. You have in your right, the page past the minutes. I don't know if, I was explaining this to the commissioner earlier, we're really having a hard time with the highway department ordering equipment. They have to commit these funds, not commit, but get it in a budget committee to get a PO, get it in a budget code to get a PO, to even put their name on a list that maybe could be drawn, that they have, are one of the people eligible to even buy the truck. So, they're having a hard time ordering equipment and so this, there's a, an ordering process that they need to commit to by, I think, next week and if they can get this budget amendment passed. I wanted the budget amendment to be in place before I said, yes, we can commit to ordering a truck, you know, but getting in a list to even order a truck. So, this, it's what that's for. Gary's in the hall, if you have any questions for him or to ask him any question.
Commissioner Isbell.
My question is what's, what's their fund balance from the highway department?
I'm sorry.
What's their fund balance from highway department?
Um, hold on a second. We find that room for you. I don't have a lot of room up here.
I think I've got it, but I just want to make sure.
It's 3.1 million.
Commissioner Foster.
So, Gary, I got a question. Is this something that y'all were budgeting for? I know he said you got to get on a list and I, I know the back order on trucks right now is a year or more.
Well, some of the manufacturers are done now. You have to get on a list and if we don't get on the list to get a truck, which will be next year's truck before we can get here. And there are just so many that are going to allow government entities to bid on it to get, I reckon. It's a new thing, the way they're producing them. I don't know what's causing it, but that's what the stipulation is. And we need to get our money transferred to get a PO, to get on the list, to get one ordered and be a year getting it before, even with this.
You got a vote? Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last thing I have is the request that Tyler made to add this to the agenda from the E911 to the sheriffs for dispatch. The amount I have is $11,200. It would be increasing revenue code 48130 by that amount and expenditure code 54490148 by $11,200. I would just need a motion and a second and a vote.
Motion by Commissioner Val, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Commissioner Mays.
Robbie, there was some email back and forth that I saw with Randy regarding the fringe amounts that would make it a little over 12,000.
$12,057, you want to include that amount?
I don't, I mean, that would be up to the 911 board. I'm not sure how does, how does it work with the $600 in-service and the $800 in-service?
The state sends all the money for that.
They do. My question is, is that, do they get taxed off of that or do they get that directly?
They get taxed off that.
Okay. Then I think that what we have is, unless the board, unless 911 board wants it.
Well, we could bring that, if they decide to donate more, let's bring it back.
I just want to make sure that everything's fair across the board.
Transparent.
Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. 13 yes, one abstention. Motion passes.
Okay, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Y'all have a good one.
So, do you all want to see what you purchased tonight or a prototype? All right. I told Nathan, I said there is no way that I'm getting on this to give you all like a visual. I'm not hoisting my big self up there.
Commissioner Smallridge asked at the budget committee meeting about what a stretcher was and his recollection, recollection is very similar to what it looked like when I started, which is dramatically different than what they have today and what we use today. And actually, my predecessor, Robert Bird, was able to bring into the organization back in, in 2008 by the graciousness of the commission then too. So, these are our power stretchers that we are using now for patient care. As Commissioner Bob Smallridge was referring to, how the stretcher used to be was completely manual. Of course, they weren't much lighter, but it was a two-person, one on each end and you, and you lift. And it did have bars that came out on the side, so when we did have those heavier patients that you could have other people help. But now it's more of having a system and a frame and a motor hydraulic system that will lower it, but also raise it. And they can handle up to 750 pounds, which honestly, we had one break because we exceeded that weight limit of a 900-pound patient in Clinton and unfortunately rendered the system inoperable. Now, it was a very old stretcher we had, so, but...
Actually, I asked why the heck does it cost so much?
Yeah. Well, you did ask that and you remember basically what they were, but a lot of change... Yeah. Well, you did ask that, and basically what they were. But a lot of changes has come over the years. A lot of safety. It used to just have three straps. Now it has several more come over the shoulder, because crash studies would show that, that without the shoulder straps hitting head-on, the patient could projectile off. So, they've come with a lot of changes on the safety, a lot of changes in function, but you can see even from the frame, pretty quite structural to sound for what they do, what they, what they provide. So, I thought I'd at least bring it so you can see it. Hopefully, this is the only way you'll see it.
What's the sticker price on that?
Twenty, about $28,000. Yeah, each.
Nathan, I appreciate the reduction in workers' comp claims. That's been another side benefit.
It is, definitely is, very much on that side. So, anyway, we'll learn to bring that. Any questions anymore? Anybody want to try that?
Maybe next time.
Not again.
Not again, yeah.
Nathan, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
One, one thing?
Yes.
Look, and, and I can't help myself, but if you look at the cylinder, it's got a jam nut right there at the bottom. It's supposed to be down to the other end, because it's already backing out.
Okay.
So, if that comes out, we got another claim.
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to Director Sweet. You come out to my house unfortunately last week. Fortunately, it wasn't a life or death situation, but I stayed out of your folks' way, but they were very professional and responsive, and I could hear them in there. I could hear that unit working, so I just wanted to say thank you, and appreciate what y'all do, and I wanted the mayor to hear that as well, so thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure to pass that on to the crew.
We let Dr. Parrott jump in, Mayor Frank?
Pardon?
Yes, we skipped Dr. Parrott real quick.
Thank you. It's, it's always a pleasure to get to come and talk about the schools. And the first thing, I, I want to read this to you, because I don't want to mess it up. So, on November 11th, 2022, the National Association of ESSA, the Elementary Secondary Education Act program, state program administration was pleased to announce that Fairview Elementary School had been named as one of the top 100 schools in the nation. And for academic achievement. And they will, they will get to go to the national conference in, I think it's in January, February, and then the, we will go to the State Board of Education to be recognized at a March or April meeting. So, that, that's a pretty big deal, when you look at the schools that have got that, and that's for student achievement. And, and they were a reward school this year. We had more than, we had Clinton High School was a level five school, and then we had Norris Elementary was a reward school. So, it just goes to show you, public education's doing good in Anderson County. Just a couple more things. I hope you got a chance to read. Our report had a lot of great things in there this, this month. Norris Middle School, they've got the concrete down. They were so stark laying block today. They were going to lay it last week, and then the flu took over, I think. The softball field, if you were at the, they've put that off till February. They've delayed that again, so we're working with the city right now to make sure the girls have a place to play softball at this spring. So, they'll be playing at Lakefront Park, and we're going to have to work with the city and do some upgrades there to make sure it's ready for them. But that was really disappointing to us. We had all of our things ready for it, and just a technicality, I think sometimes they just try to find technicalities to move, to slow things down. Anderson County football, only the second time in history. They will be playing this Friday night at the quarterfinals. They'll be in Red Bank. I really want to wish them well. They've done a, done an excellent job this year. And the last but not least, I will wish you all a very blessed Thanksgiving, and I'll take any questions.
I went to Fairview, and I didn't realize I was pulling the average down, so I hope that they...
That's why we just now got that.
Yeah, it took you that long to recover. Commissioner Isbell?
Hey, I just want to comment on the sportsmanship of the Anderson County Mavericks Friday night. It was spectacular, the sportsmanship that came from the Mavericks. Not going to say that about the Greenville side, because I was seeing a lot of late hits and out-of-bound hits, and even had an issue in the bathroom with one of the Greenville people. And I'm just, you know, just a happy guy. But anyway, I do appreciate the sportsmanship that Anderson County played, and you seen Anderson County players helping up the Greenville players when they'd drive them into dirt and they couldn't get up. So, I appreciate that.
It, it's kind of ironic, too. Davey Gillum, the last time they were on that, that they went to the quarterfinals, Davey Gillum was a player there, now he's the coach there the second time.
Commissioner Vanderpump.
I also wanted to say, I am a proud alumni of Fairview Elementary School. Very, very, very proud of what they're doing out there. I did actually have some nieces and nephews who attend there. And Ms. Couples does a great job, and, and very, very, very excellent. Thank you.
I'm kind of partial, too. My daughter teaches there, so my grandkids go there, so I get kind of partial, too. But, you know, that's the thing about Anderson County. There's no school in Anderson County that I wouldn't send my kid or my grandkid to. They're all great schools.
Correct.
See, I believe it's the semifinals, isn't it?
Semifinal, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a semifinal, semifinals, I'm sorry, yeah. They just got one more. If they win Red Bank, then they go to the state playoff.
It'd be Pearl Collin or Haywood.
Yes.
That's great. Greenville's been a problem for us.
Yes.
Love to see that score.
Actually, it was a slaughter rule, because it was 30 points ahead.
Absolutely. That's great.
Any other questions for Dr. Parrott? Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you all.
Mayor, do you want to do now, or do you want, can we take a 10-minute recess? How, how's everybody feeling? Do we need a break?
I'm good.
Five, five-minute recess, five-minute recess. Okay.
...
Pulling a Denenberg over there. We got everybody back in, just about. All right, next up's the county mayor, Mayor Frank.
Thank you, Chairman. The first item on the agenda, I am requesting a motion to approve a commitment of a delinquent tax property being held by Anderson County, that's 303 Hill Street in Rocky Top, for use in the Tennessee Emergency Broadband Fund, American Rescue Plan broadband infrastructure grant by Highland Communications in Anderson County. And what I'm asking for is the commitment, and then I'm working with Jay on the method, and then that will come back to you if necessary. But what I would like to do is have the commitment so that they know the property is available, and then we'll get it done how we're legally able to get it done. So, that will either be a transfer or a long-term lease, a transfer or something would go probably through Chancery Court. I was just chatting with Jay about that. But we will come back to you with that, but I'm just asking for the commitment tonight.
Motion by Commissioner Mays, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. I guess Mark Commissioner White absent, maybe?
It's not him right now.
Okay, he may come back. Motion passes. It approved, yeah.
Okay. And that, that grant was awarded, so this is just something that they need in order to get the build-out done. The next motion is, I'm requesting a motion to authorize me to enter into negotiations with Highland Communications regarding a reduction in the Anderson County ARP matching funds in lieu of this property commitment for the above broadband package. And if you'll recall, we did, you did through budget committee in full commission, you matched two broadband grant applications, one for Comcast and one for Highland, in the amount of $250,000 each through the ARP funds. And both of those grant applications were awarded by the state of Tennessee. But we may be able to negotiate the entire 250,000 back from Highland and just do the property instead, but I would like the official authorization to be able to enter into those negotiations.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Next is appointment of Anthony Allen to the Regional Solid Waste Board, term ending 9/2026.
Motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, the next, and, and this is, thank you to Commissioner Wondell. He alerted me to the opportunity for grant application through Energy Community Alliance, Alliance. And this is an organization that Anderson County is a member of, City of Oak Ridge, Roan County. A lot of energy communities across the United States are members of Energy of energy communities across the United States are members of Energy Communities Alliance. This particular grant is a no-match grant, but it is a government education and outreach grant. And what I'm asking to do here is authorize me to submit an application, and it would be used to also benefit ORCA, and ORCA is Oak Ridge Reservation Communities Alliance. And the members of ORCA are Anderson County, Roan County, Morgan County, Knox County, and the City of Oak Ridge. And this group meets several times a year, the purpose is to educate the public about environmental issues or cleanup issues, DOE-related operations that affect environmental cleanup or might impact the environment, and so I'm working on a grant application, I've shared some of the draft with Commissioner Wondell, and I'm happy to read to you the grant narrative if you are interested, or if you want me not to bore you, I can just send it out via email.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say it's well-written, and Mary's got her hands on that. I'm confident what she's already put together, it'll be considered appreciated.
Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commission, and I will, when I get that finalized, I will send it out to you all. And then last, I just had an update only, and this is, and the reason I put this on here is this is one of those grant applications where I came to you at the last minute, I mean, it made it to the agenda, but it came at the last minute, and it did not require a match, but you all were willing to match, and that particular match paid off and yielded us a pretty sizable award. And I want to compliment you because, you know, in our discussions, I said, you know, a match, I think, would show our commitment, and interestingly, one of the folks who was participating in the award said, and you know what made Anderson County's grant stand out, or application stand out? The match, you all were willing to put some funds in for this. And so this is a 1.851, $1,851,400 grant for Gibbs Ferry Park, and it will take a little while, it's a federal grant through Federal Highway and U.S. Department of Transportation, but it will allow us to do things, improve the boat ramp, do a dock, improve all the safety, add boat parking, do kayak, all of this, you know, of course, to ADA standards, ADA compliant, kayak launch, all, just a whole lot of things here, and then we're also meeting with TDOT about using this opportunity to perhaps realign the entrance to a safer entrance, and maybe leveraging and, you know, get access to some TDOT safety funds. So this is a big win, it'll be a couple of years in the making, but it's a big win for Anderson County, and it's an area where I just want to thank you, thank you for working with me, and then thank you for your commitment to the parks, and this is a big win for Anderson County.
Thank you.
And just a couple of other things before I step away. One, I just would like to alert you to the Tennessee Department of Health, they have their drug overdose report out for 2021, and I do want to share a couple of highlights with you currently here in Anderson County, as you know, I've spoken with you several times about drug overdose and what we were seeing on the streets, but I will say, so far this year, and I'm hoping, praying this continues, our number is actually down. So just a real couple of quick highlights, in 2021, in the state of Tennessee, 3,814 people died of drug overdose, that was up 26% from 2020, opioids were involved in 80% in 2021, and primarily involved fentanyl. The stimulant deaths, 77 involved opiates, with the most frequently involved opiate being fentanyl, 94%. East Tennessee was the highest number of overdose deaths comprised 42% of the deaths in 2021, and males accounted for 2/3 of those. In Anderson County, in 2021, 91 overdose deaths, and 69 involved fentanyl, and this year, we're looking at, and this is from our medical examiner, I try to stay in touch with them pretty frequently, this year, we're looking at a 36% decrease through 10:31. So we're currently at 46, and 50% of those fentanyl. So in the last six months, Nathan, he keeps track of what EMS does in terms of Narcan delivery, there have been 96 calls that involve administration of Narcan, but during that period of time, there have been 191 calls responding to overdose. So that's some quick data, but things are looking a better direction this year, which is very good to see. And then one other thing I just wanted to draw your attention to is, I did attend a nuclear NRC meeting, and I picked up a packet for you all, and I'm going to give it to Annette to put down in your commission office, so it's just for you, and it's on the Kairos Hermes test reactor, so they are building a test reactor, it's in Roan County, but there is a lot nuclear that's going on in Oak Ridge, and I'll try to start keeping you abreast of that, even though it might not be happening on the Anderson County side, but Roan County's our sister county, and Oak Ridge is shared with Anderson and Roan. And then lastly, we're going to be hosting an appreciation event, a lot of you all know and support our J-ROTC programs, our Junior ROTC programs, Clinton High School has Air Force Junior ROTC, Anderson County has Navy, and Oak Ridge High School has Navy. We're going to have an appreciation event for them, December 6th, here in front of the courthouse, all three programs. We want to take a picture of all the cadets with elected officials, so I would love for all of you who can be there to come, we'll take a picture, we'll read a proclamation thanking them, a lot of them, or you see them at events in the community, from presentation of colors to working, you know, the Veterans Breakfast, and all around the community. So we would like Anderson County to be the place where we start recognizing the programs for their value and contribution, and make this an annual event, it'll be very quick, they'll be in formation in front of the courthouse, the city of Clinton is going to close the street, so invite you all out for something good and something positive, and so the cadets can see how much we appreciate them and support them and encourage them in their leadership skills and efforts. And that's all I have, other than Happy Thanksgiving.
Did you say what time that is?
1:00 p.m., December 6th.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Isbell.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mayor for what she's been doing for the Veterans Breakfast, it turned out very well, and there was a lot of participation by a lot of commissioners and a lot of people, even in the rain, there was a lot of people out for the parade, so it was great.
Yes.
But thank you, and thank you to all of our veterans.
Yes, thank you, veterans.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, yes, thank you for all you do for veterans, and I wanted to ask, Veterans Bridge flags, is that still?
It's in the works, yes, so.
That's fine.
I do have a, as soon as I hear back from TDOT, I do have a rough estimate, which is a high estimate because I had to get one, and so we're looking at about 60,000, but of course, that doesn't take into account, again, that was, we better aim high, you know, we can get plants at a better cost, we can do some work in-house, and our planner acknowledged all of that, so.
Still moving forward.
Still moving forward, yes, sir.
And I appreciate your help there, and then the last thing, have you heard anything from TDEC on the American Nuclear, any updates on that?
I have not, I can check in, I know they said, it seems like at our workshop, they announced, you know, was it two or three months it would take them to get to the next step?
Okay.
I will let you know, Commissioner, and I know that you led the motion to install, or asked TDOT to install lighting and on the State Route 170, their Edgemore Road, and Commission did a resolution authorizing that, and it is a cost borne by local government, but they can put it into the contract, I did get word that they approved that, and they would send us a contract, so that should be coming through in a few months.
Are we talking about New Henderson?
No, the, if you'll recall, like, when they do that expansion of Edgemore Road, widen it, that kind of high mass lighting down through there, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Happy Thanksgiving. We've got our ASAP director here, Kayla Simon, did you want to chime in on the new stats? Sure, if you want to, give us some information.
Hi, for those of you who might not remember, I'm Kayla Simon, the executive director for ASAP of Anderson, we're the anti-drug coalition here in Anderson County, I just want to thank the mayor for her devotion to ASAP over the years, we haven't gotten here just from us alone, this has been a huge input from people in the community, from our school systems, from commission, there's so many people who have been dedicated to this cause, and those numbers, those have been reached before, I don't know if y'all know, back in 2018 to 2019, Anderson County was one of only four counties who decreased their overdose rates, and then the pandemic kind of threw things back into a bad place, but to see that that's happening again, I think speaks to this community, and speaks to how hard everyone has dedicated themselves to eradicating addiction in this community and fighting many of the underlying causes, and ASAP will always be here to help lead those prevention efforts and contribute to the community as meaningfully as we possibly can, but those numbers, I think everyone should kind of be happy and excited about those, because we've all contributed to this, not just ASAP. Do y'all have any questions about overdose rates, or do you think you're good? Okay, cool.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, always blessed to be with you, I have a couple items for your approval, does anybody have any questions on the contract approvals, Section A on my written report? Section B is the zoning violations, the newly opened, resolved, delinquent taxes, the best thing I can tell you there is the delinquent tax sale is set for December 10th at 10:30 a.m. Now, remember, this is an online auction, you must pre-register with govies.com, and you must pre-qualify, it'll start at 10:30 in the morning, you'll have five minutes to enter bids, if you have any constituents that call you and have questions, you can't answer, send them my way, we'll be glad to help, that'll be the Norris and Oak Ridge taxes for 2018, 2019, and 2020 Norris also. Chairman Isbell, do you want me to go over these couple things from operations here?
You can.
Okay, the Oak Ridge Fire Training Tower, they requested some amendments after we passed that back in September, Operations Committee approved those recommendations, those amendments, you've got the clean version in front of you, I need a motion to approve that if you so desire.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Smallridge. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The vehicle donation to Norris, this is a surplus sheriff's vehicle, we did a resolution or interlocal agreement to transfer that vehicle, it's a 2011 Ford Crown Vic, we're sending that to Norris in return for a release of liability on that, I need that approval.
I had a, spoke to Robbie, or he spoke to me earlier about that, does that need to go back through purchasing committee or anything? He said something about maybe that one hadn't been through purchasing.
I was told they're all surplus.
They were all surplus, okay.
He's had several bunches that have been surplus in the past.
So they've already been, okay.
I'll check with him tomorrow, just to make sure, we'll get that done if there's, but we've been told it's surplus.
Okay, any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
The next item I have is Item G, last month, we had some good discussion, Commissioner Wondell briefly mentioned to Dr. Parrott during his presentation about getting the word out about TCAT and the programs they have, and talking about the director up there, the various students, and the teachers that they have, Commissioner Allen seemed to support that at that time, mentioned that he'd like to see that, I've spoke with Ryan Sutton and Andy, they're glad to produce this, what we're doing is, they're going to basically go up there, meet with the director, see what programs they want to really push, I talked to some of the students, but we do need your approval to produce and broadcast that TCAT educational piece, as we spoke about last month.
Motion by Commissioner Isbell. Is that a different move? Is that? Motion to approve. Motion to approve, okay, it came back, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Just an update on a couple lawsuits here, the Ayers et al., that's the voting machine case, what a mess, we've got motions to dismiss filed, they're trying to go through pro se, they've requested to be remanded to Anderson County Circuit Court, they can't do that once the feds remove it, and they removed it because you've got members of the House of Representatives and the Senate, Senator Blackburn, Senator Hagerty, Representatives Cohen, Cooper, and Kustoff from West Tennessee, so once they exercise their jurisdiction, it goes to federal court, so all that's moot, Ms. Ayers today has requested that it go to the U.S. Supreme Court, and we don't even have a decision to appeal to the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals, so it's a real mess, I don't worry about liability in this case, but it has caused a lot of work, but that's where that case stands, I'll keep you updated, it's, all I can say is, it's a mess. The Talent case, that was the Nancy Talent case, it's been lingering for a little over a year, one of Commissioner Val's friends, and came out of jail, she was the one that emailed me on Christmas Eve, very nice of her, General Clark, and, but anyway, that's dismissed, and no liability to Anderson County. Got a note for, on the Holiday Bureau's, you know, if you've never dealt with the Holiday Bureau, just a wonderful group of people, we have, we leased them space, long-term lease, behind Daniel Arthur years ago in the early 2000s, they built their own building on it, it's a group of men and women that rehab toys and give them to underprivileged people, kids, and they do wonderful work in our community, if you ever get a chance, just go by and talk to them, you'll find some highly dedicated, big-hearted folks, but a couple announcements there, on December 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th, they'll be giving out toys, it's completely income-based, a lot of these toys are rehab, but if you've ever seen some of the bikes they've done, it's spectacular, they look brand-new, I know Tim's been involved in it before, it's amazing what they do. The food carts will start on the 15th and 16th, and we missed the Christmas trees, that was last Thursday, but if you know people that may be in need, that's a great place to go, again, the toys are 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th of December, and the food carts start on the 15th and in the 16th. The addition was the resolution to include public safety dispatchers in the death benefit, you've got that before you, this was a late addition, Commissioner Mays brought this up, I thought is a wonderful idea, and we found some time over the weekend to put it together, you've got that before you, but basically what this resolution does is request the General Assembly to amend those statutes, to give a death penalty, death benefit of $250,000, $50,000 for five years in a row, to officers or public safety personnel that are killed in the line of duty, this would apply to law enforcement officers already, firefighters, even including volunteer firefighters, first responders, EMS, emergency management gets a $25,000 death benefit, but this will now cover public safety dispatchers. And if you've ever... And if you've ever worked or been in a small police department, it's not like our big setup where we have a locked room over here that has several dispatchers in it at one time. The face of the police department after hours is your dispatcher. A lot of times, they're the greeter at the door. They handle all the call-ins. So these people are definitely in harm's way. We lost a dispatcher due to COVID, and, correct me if I'm wrong on that, and they were unable to collect the death benefit. But now, if we put them under this one statute, I've asked for the amendment of both the retirement, TCRS statute, both the general death benefit statute, and also the insurance pool benefit. If we put them in this particular provision, I think that's going to help a lot. And I'm excited for them to consider that. They're well-deserving people that work hard for many police departments and fire departments across the state. Any questions about that resolution? And Commissioner Mays, feel free to chime in, and you're the one that requested this.
No, I just wanted to thank you for putting it together so fast.
Oh, it's no problem. I enjoyed doing this.
Just a little background for some, is just, you know, Anderson County lost a dispatcher due to COVID. We don't, there's not as much interaction at a bigger agency. But officers and other personnel are in the dispatch center at all times. They're exposed to that. And what really stemmed from was in Rocky Top, when the fire chief passed away from COVID, as well as a few days later, a dispatcher passed from COVID. The fire chief, deservingly, received this death benefit. You know, $50,000 a year for five years. And unfortunately, the dispatcher, who, especially in a town like Rocky Top, smaller, is exposed to anyone that was coming in and everything. And unfortunately, their family did not get that. But states across the country are recognizing dispatchers as first responders. I know Alabama just recently, just, their General Assembly approved. That goes into effect January 1st. But I just want to thank you for putting this together. I know that I spoke to the 911 Board, and they are very appreciative and, of course, in favor of this.
Well, thank you, sir. Very good.
Commissioner Bochamp?
Thank you, Chairman. Jay, I'm not saying that this is not a good thing, and I'm all for it. But this is my third meeting where I've received stuff a couple of hours before a meeting, and I would like to read this stuff. We have a commission deadline, so if it's not on for that, I know we're trying to rush things through, but I would appreciate things being put on to the next month. I know we're in a rush for things. But I just received one, 549. That'll be the next one we take up. And I think that's pretty thick. We deserve to be able to read these things ahead of time. So I would like if we could start getting these things before the deadline. If not the deadline, then we need to push it to the next meeting.
I'll tell you this, it's not our fault. We're trying to help. And if you saw that email where I sent it out, it says you're welcome to defer it if you don't agree with it.
Yeah.
The only reason I spoke about this at Operations is we need to get our private acts, our recommendations to the General Assembly down there as soon as possible, early in the month of December. That would put it off till at least the 3rd Tuesday, getting it down there in December. And that's why we try to do it as quickly as possible, and that's what's in my mind. And when somebody asks me to do something, I do it. And I take the heat for coming up here late because, and I don't put it on the other people or commissioners that request it, because I know some of them are time-sensitive. I try to get everything out as quickly as I possibly can. I'm sorry about that, but some things are time-sensitive. We try to help. And we get things, come in over the weekend. Sometimes we get them on Friday. I got many on Friday before, and sometimes the same day. And that's how it shakes out. But we're going to try to do our best to get it turned around as quickly as possible. It's your desire whether you want to defer it, whether you want to vote no or approve it tonight. It's totally up to you.
I just want to be able to read these things ahead of time.
I understand. That's fine. Any questions?
Commissioner Isbell?
Well, it's really just a statement, I guess, to the Chairman of Budget and the Budget Committee. I'm pretty sure this thing's probably going to pass. So probably, we need to start looking forward to where we can start banking some of this money, where it can come out of money that's rolled over or something like that, a percentage. So we'll be more prepared than just writing a check for $250,000. Hopefully, we never have to do that, but just in case.
Yeah, that's a different issue. The statutes allow us to do that. There's a state death penalty benefit. There is a TCRS benefit. And then local government pool insurances provide death benefits. And that's why you see so many statutes recommending amendments to it. So that's a good point, if you want to do that and have an Anderson County fund. Certainly, I'd be glad to have that, too. But we're trying to take in all those statutes and get them amended to include public safety dispatchers.
And I don't think that was the intent of
No.
was for the county to
Exactly.
to do anything. It was more to tie it to the state.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions on any of these? Okay.
Commissioner Wondell, was that your motion to approve?
Yes.
That was, okay. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Just, I quoted that statute here in the middle of that Resolution 751-210. That money comes from the state. I think that's all I've got, unless you want me to take up that other one. That's under new business.
We've got it under new business, yeah.
Anyway, is there anything, any questions I can answer for anyone? Anything I can do for you? If not, feel free to call me, email me. We're always around. Be glad to assist with anything you have. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we've got committee reports. We've got, start with Operations Committee Chairman Isbell.
Just a second. I was preparing until. All right. Okay, this one's real short now. Commissioner Yeager moved to approve the Anderson County, Tennessee, brand guide official logo, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Motion passed unanimously for the full commission for approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Let's go to the board and vote. Oh, Commissioner Wondell?
Mr. Chairman, I hope if this passes, that we could get to a point. I'd like to see us get some lapel pins. So when we're out and about as commissioners, we can be sporting those. And I'd really like to, I'll pay for my own if I have to, just, I'd like to see. This is great work, by the way. I like this new logo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell.
Yeah, they did an excellent job on creating this logo and, you know, shirts and all that, you know, embroidered shirts, hats. I mean, it's great. It's one I'm really proud of. They did an excellent job.
All right, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes unanimously.
That concludes Operations Committee Report.
Thank you, Chairman Isbell. All right, next, Animal Care Advisory Committee Chairman Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to read every single motion here, but I just want to tell my fellow commissioners here that the mayor came in. She came in with Dr. Garrett and Damon and talked to the committee as a whole. And she gave a great status report. A lot of the things we've been talking about the last few months, she responded to, I think, just about every one of them. She also had a plan of attack, and I felt like it was very well-received by the committee. Basically, what you'll see in your minutes there is a lot of the requests that the mayor had made. And basically, and Mayor, you jump in if I forget anything, but basically, the mayor would like to see a recommendation from the committee. And this is something they talked about prior. Talking about the qualified or the best adoption locations and different groups. And so we formed a task force. That's one of the motions there. That task force is going to get together within the committee and provide that to the mayor and Damon and Dr. Garrett. And we'll have a process on how we get out to the adoption agencies. Mayor, am I forgetting anything there? And the last thing that the mayor kind of brought to our attention, which, you know, I didn't understand it, but as she talked about it, and it made sense, is a need to shut the facility down. And she'll make that decision with her team, maybe once a month or once a week. That's totally going to be in the mayor's purview. But that's for, to provide training for the team and also to provide updates to the animal shelter. Is that right, Mayor? So I just, that's all I have, Mayor, if you had anything to add. But if the committee would be so kind, just accept the report as presented, I appreciate that.
Well, good. Thank you, yeah. A motion to accept that by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Is that all for the?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's all for your report, okay. And next, we've got the Nominating Committee Report Chairman Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Nominating Committee met on November the 15th to fill two openings with the Veterans Service Advisory Board. Commissioner Yeager made a motion to appoint Dr. Robert Matthews and Mark Brooks as a member, seconded by Commissioner Bochamp. The motion was passed. We also wanted to make a special note that Commissioner Varan has been very active in attending those meetings. And just wanted to thank him for the time he's volunteering and the stuff that he's doing with that committee. But motion was passed unanimously, and I submit further approval.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And next, we've got new business. Vice Chairman Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-11-972. An explanation, I do want to preface it by apologizing for getting this on the commissioner's desk at the last minute. I will take the blame and the responsibility for that. To give you all a little bit of background on what this is, the Tennessee Corrections Institute has began a new category of certification and accreditation. And they have outlined in these criterias, I believe, it's all of us included in there. It's in addition to everything that we've always done. And it adds to the state board bill if we accomplish them. By our calculation...
Commissioner Val, can you explain the state board bill, what it means?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. With the new State inmates being held in the county jail get paid $39 per day, per state inmate, from the Tennessee Department of Corrections. There's a lot of movement going on across the state now to try to begin more rehabilitative efforts while they are incarcerated. Governor's Office has supported a lot of that. But along with that, if we are able to do everything that's in this criteria, then we will increase our board bill per inmate, per $6 per day. According to CTAAS, the foremost experts on this, we're thinking anywhere between $250,000 and $300,000 extra dollars a year that would do that. If you all will remember, a few months ago, we passed what we called the Stepping Up Initiative, which created a committee. We thought that was all that needed to be required. We found out today that this also needs to be done to create a county group effort together, bring more people to the table. And they will be coming to inspect us, examine us, to see if we qualify for this in the next few days. So I'll take responsibility for getting it up to you guys late. We thought we had everything covered, found out today we did not. But if we do this, it will certainly increase the board bill, and it will increase, it will increase the revenue that we're bringing in off that, so.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Val, seconded by Commissioner Mays. Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'm voting yes by my
Oh, okay.
It's got 88%, but it just went blank.
Mark, Commissioner Isbell, yes.
No, it's got 88% battery.
He, yes, he's voted, you voted yes?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, one other thing. I wanted to make sure, and Commissioner Wondell can help me with this. The only two things that I've got going down to the General Assembly are the repeal of the Veteran Services Private Act. We went with the state. That's been approved by two-thirds. And also requesting this change on the public safety dispatcher. Am I missing anything? Because I want to get those down there as quickly as possible. Okay, thank y'all. If you can remember something, I think we're okay on that.
Mr. Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, you bring up something that interests me. We passed a resolution last year that went to the state that nothing happened on about
Partisan.
Yeah, nonpartisan elections.
I can check on that. I don't think it was ever dropped in the hat, though.
That intrigues me. It just kind of goes down there and sits. I'd like to, what do we need to do to bring it up again?
You've already got the two-thirds vote to send it down.
I'm going to make a motion that that resolution, I don't know it off the top of my head. I know there's a 2-1 in it. That's about all I know. But I'd like to see that resolution be delivered back to the state and get at least a response from them. And if it's no, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
They should respond.
Okay. So those three is the way I see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you make that as motion?
Sure.
You got a motion? And you got a second by Commissioner Yeager and Smarage, Commissioner Isbell?
I think what happened on that is they probably didn't send it out, but the reply that I got is probably it was a state law that said that, you know, either party could do that. It used to have that wrote down, but I don't know exactly what it is.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. And I thought that John Reagan had sent it to everybody, I thought.
Yeah, this, you know, there's controversy around it, whether a constitutional form of government, county government can do it, whether it takes a charter form of government. But on the state level, there is a private act. There's a couple of private acts that have been approved by the General Assembly. And one of them is in Nashville. Believe it or not, it's a nonpartisan DA. And I can't remember everything off the top of my head. I spoke about it when we passed that. But there was a couple of other counties that's got private acts, some of this. But I want to get
The act was in a charter, too.
What?
The explanation of everything in a charter.
Yeah, that's the state law that allows the parties to pick.
I think that was the answer.
The, okay, I've got all these here. I'll get them all down as soon as this is, the minutes are typed up on this meeting.
All right, any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. Yes to no, motion fails. Any other, any other new business? Any old business? All right. Stand adjourned.